Testing one, two, three. This will be the August 7th, 2013 City Council Regular Meeting.
Courtney here.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting, August 7th, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Deenan for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Moment of silence, please. Amen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments. These comments are on non-agenda items. The floor is now open.
I just briefly want to talk about—
If your name—
Anthony Lawrence Rutherford. Thinking about funding processes and some of the things that we've done in this city that have been completely irrational, for lack of a better word. And I just want to throw one or two examples of— obviously Peg Leggs was a boondoggle from start to finish. And then we have another issue that I saw that where the city, you know, in its wisdom decided to take over a park that was being funded by the county so that we could control it, which really doesn't mean anything because it really can't stop people from coming and going. But what we ended up doing was picking up the maintenance on another beachfront property in the park so that the city now was, you know, taking the financial burden as opposed to the county. So, you know, with these things in mind, I just want you to try to start thinking more prudently on how we can get money for the city. And, I mean, we pay some of the highest taxes in this entire county. So there's ways of generating revenue and money. And I think the number of, you know, cuts in employees and things like that. We need to kind of gear towards thinking about how we can improve and how we can generate more revenue for the city rather than some of the other—
Steve Headley, resident?
Just a question on a follow-up. On the July 17th meeting for the City Council, the general meeting, there was a discussion about the agreement between the CRA, the city, and the county. And Ms. Barker announced that there would be—the county commissioners were voting on the agreement on August 7th. That's today. Do we have a resolution to that?
I believe that is—if I'm not mistaken, is August 20th.
Okay.
Yep, it is on August 20th—
Okay.
—for the county.
Thank you.
Yep. Floor is still open for citizens' comment on non-agenda items.
I'd like to address a couple of the comments that were made. The statement was made that we pay some of the highest taxes. That—well, what goes along with that is the fact that we have the highest level of services of any governmental entity in Brevard County. And our residents have told us many times, in many ways, that this is the level of service that they want. And so that's why our taxes are what they are, but we certainly get our money's worth. And the comment was made that we need to think of more ways—to generate more revenue for the city. Peterin, and I can personally tell you that over the past 15 years, this city brought in approximately $21 million in grant funds that helped us to upgrade our stormwater drainage system, to prevent flooding in the city, and so many other things. So we have been on the forefront of looking for ways to generate more revenues for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. Thank you. Citizens' comment—City Council comments. Who would like to start?
None.
None, thank you.
Good, no. I want to bring up one. I just attended the EDC, Economic Development Council, meeting in Cocoa Beach. And very, very interesting. Very—it's going to be bringing in the number of jobs. Interesting. And I also think it's good contact for us. And I'll bring the second part of this up tomorrow night because it's more CRA-related. Courtney, I think we really need to take a look at becoming a member there and getting some of the benefits of what they're doing and also tie that into the CRA to help develop businesses in the city. Any further council comments? City Attorney's Report. Sorry to say, our city attorney is out of town. His father is gravely ill and will not be attending tonight, so we'll keep Jim in our thoughts. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Please don't forget our inaugural Satellite Beach Flag Run. We are accepting registrations now at the Schecter Center. And that event is a 5K, family-friendly, meaning you can walk or run. And that will be held on September 21st, 2013. The event is advertised on the City Managers' Facebook page, as well as the Recreation's Facebook page, and also advertised at the Schecter Center. We also bikes to our skate park. The organization that is sponsoring those BMX riders is having an event on August 11th from 4:00 to 8:00, which includes a barbecue. So if you've ever not seen those kids ride those bikes, it's very, very fun to watch. So I encourage you to go. I start that at the end of August, and that will be available to all employees. That's going to be subjects that touch all of the departments. Some of those training seminars will be applicable to citizens as well, and we will make those sessions available to citizens. So sometimes we have—for example, the police department will come in and give us training on protecting yourselves from identity theft. And that—we will make those interesting sessions open to the public when we have those. A state agency calls one of our department heads and says, "Hey, we heard you are the best trainer in leadership and management in the state of Florida, and we would like to come and train our employees." And that's exactly what happened with our Chief Pearson, who has been tapped by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to basically provide training presentations to their new employees. Our Public Works Department— I really enjoy embarrassing him, too. Our Public Works Department has completed 300-plus linear feet of sidewalk replacement along Jackson Avenue prior to the new school year. I don't know if you've seen that. I did try to put out in Facebook not to write your names in it when it was drawing, but it does fix a lot of complaints that we were getting on the condition of that sidewalk. The Fire Department's Fall Prevention Program is now being looked at by the state of Florida as a model program during a statewide EMS and fire training event in Orlando. So congratulations to the Fire Department and Chief Hughes for creating a program that is literally considered a model by the state of Florida in our own community. He's not here to embarrass, so it's unfortunate. In terms of our Recreation Department, we had a very successful swim program this past summer, thanks to Doug Cook, the Satellite High School Vice Principal, for securing the facility, and the dedication of Linda Anderson, which is the Satellite High School, to 249 students. And we had 49 swimmers on the Recreation Swim Team. We did generate $14,315 in income and spent $13,277 for salaries and pool fees, which made us $1,038. So we will be having that program again next year. So congratulations to the Recreation Department for such a successful program. Although staff has contacted Waste Management numerous times regarding the lids on the toters, they did provide some information in the email, and they've really started understanding that we were pretty upset about that. And so I hope you see some improvement there, and please let me know if you—
I have a couple of questions and comments on what we've gone over. The BMX bikers at the skate park, they're not going to be there at the same time that the skateboarders are there, are they?
Yes, yes. So we're not eliminating skaters from those hours, but we're adding the bikes during those hours. But it's during hours that the skaters use the park the least.
Is that a good idea?
Yeah, they don't have conflicts. It's very rare. It's when it's crowded with skaters, you don't want to have the bikes there.
I have a question related to that. Did the light get fixed going into the—
We checked into that. We put a work order in, and we did get confirmation that the work order was put in. So I did ask someone from Public Works to drive there tonight to see if it's been fixed.
It's a dangerous situation right there on the curve.
I also want to thank these staff members who have been singled out here. This does not surprise me. This is absolutely top-notch performance, and they do it routinely. This is not unusual. So I congratulate them. And I do—
And closed.
Oh, good. And my cans have been upright, and I've been very happy. So let them know.
Okay.
Courtney, is that— I have one question on the Satellite—
Information to include in the, you know, letter that we're sending up to administration and the School Board Administration so we can come up with that agreement.
Okay, great.
But the school principal is very much on board with what we'd like to do.
Great, thank you.
I did have some additional updates before I get to action items. We had a meeting with the School Board staff today with all the other planners and city managers in the county regarding school concurrency and some of the issues that has been happening in the past. I did get some confirmation that the school staff will not be recommending any more closures this coming year. They will let us know—I—because the first question I asked was, you know, will you let us know if the superintendent changes his mind? Because that seemed—that's what happened last year. And they said yes. So that'll be in the next couple of weeks where we'll have some definitive answers on that. So I think that's good for our Seapark parents, that they can kind of breathe this coming year. The other issue is school concurrency. There are some cities—not many—that would like to see that go away. My recommendation would be not to make that go away. So we're working towards changing—streamlining the agreement to make it easier on people to comply with, but to continue on with school concurrency. That is pretty much a big reason why we have all of our schools open right now. The School Board is having a lot of financial issues with their capital. They will be burning through their fund balance, basically, this year. So I did say—they're going to be discussing the sales tax referendum at their next couple of board meetings. And I did indicate that if that is something that you're looking at, that we would be willing to provide the factual information to our citizens when you get that in. And I did want to say that we do have—the first day of school, Wednesday, on the 14th. Please be mindful when you're driving. And also, I will not be here since my preschooler is going to her first day of school, and I'll be a basket case. Facebook, I do have 137 likes now, which is more than the Fire Department's Facebook page. He thought he could beat me.
How many does the police department have?
They don't have one.
Not yet.
But—and, you know, the Fire Department's went up drastically when I friended them, okay? So—but—and that's all I have for us. And on the increased special events sponsored by the city, and that is one of your council goals, we have burned through all of your goals except for this one. So we need some direction from you on what you would like to see in terms of special events. We did provide you with a packet of information on the current special events that we do. And then I would like, before the next meeting, for you to send me your ideas so I can compile them and put them in your agenda packet so we could have some level of fruitful discussion at your next meeting. I am recommending that the city—oh, is that okay for everybody for the special events?
I'd like to make a comment on that. We are now two-thirds of the way through the year, and I think it's a little late in the year to start dumping stuff on the Rec. Department or whoever to come up with special events for the rest of this year. We are going into Founder's Day, which is always a big labor-intensive activity. We have spent this year trying to get our house back in order and to settle things down and to get the city back running the way it used to run smoothly and effectively. And so I would be in favor of just making that a goal for next year and just let's get done what is—we know is on our plate without adding anything more for the rest of this year.
My suggestion is that—I don't—at any time we give them the ideas, it doesn't mean that those ideas have to be done during this year. I think what they're looking for is direction of what kind of things are we interested in the city doing. It's the way I look at it.
It doesn't really have to be the city. There are some mini organizations that like to sponsor these things, too. So I think what we're looking for is—you might decide, okay, we do enough events, but we just need to know from you if there's any, you know—even small events. We can look at expanding our current events. Anything like that that you can think of, you know, would be helpful to us. Even just marketing to—if we decide that we don't want the city to sponsor it, we can always look at another organization to do that for us.
Well, and to back up a little bit, if it's the will of this council not to pursue special events, I'm fine with that. But a salary was increased specifically from part-time to full-time to deal with these special events, so we'd have to decrease that salary back to part-time since we're no longer going to pursue special events, which is fine with me.
The goal, I think, that we're talking about specifically is the one for 2013. And, you know, I know that we can plan these for future times. And the first thing that I would do even for 2014 is to ask our Rec. Director to come up with suggestions. They know what they—what resources they have, they know what their capabilities are, and give us a starting point to start looking at things.
What we would like to do is—for your agenda item—is to put, you know, a list together. We have the list of the city-sponsored events and the other events that occur in the city, but also provide you kind of a table and the amount of staff time that goes into those events so you can see, like, the level of event.
Good.
And if you come up with an idea for an event, we can pretty much on the spot tell you, okay, that's going to be a pretty big one, you know, that might be really easy to do, you know, something like that. So I think it would be good if you just had the discussion and, you know, it might—you might not come to an agreement at your next meeting, but, you know, we can have that two or three times down the road and see where you're at.
I'm also going to reiterate that this decision's probably been in place now for a year. So again, a part-time position was increased to full-time to deal with special events, specifically special events.
It went from—
Again, if we're not pursuing special events, then we need to decrease that position back to part-time.
Yeah, it actually went from 20 hours to 34 hours, and that's not considered full-time, but—so it is budgeted right now at 34 hours.
Well, I would also add that Rec. is one of the—all of our departments that has been very short-staffed, and I have no doubt—I'm not interested in taking her pay back away from her.
So basically, you really want a list, so you just—
Yes.
—we're creating ideas.
Yes.
Is basically what we're doing.
Just simple ideas. If you think there's a gap—if you look at the current events and think there's a gap in maybe the holidays or something like that, that, you know, we could do, then just let us know.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion on that?
Nope.
And also, just letting you know, staff will be providing our ideas, too. So we'll put that in the agenda. The next item is—I would like to—I would like to recommend that the city become a member of the Economic Development Commission. I would recommend that we do this at the chairman's level, given the size of our city, at $2,500. And this membership will provide us services from the EDC and allow us a seat on the Board of Directors. And we attended an event today. At that event, we saw several business owners that are here in our city. There are business owners from our city on the Board of Directors. We also have—the Economic Development Commission isn't just a group that brings in industrial, you know, companies. They also do many public-private partnerships. For example, they did the SNAP initiative, which is the Simple, Fod, Nimble, Advanced Permitting Initiative. And basically, it was to certify local governments in doing fast permitting. And I would really like that—to make that a goal for our city to gain that certification in the next year. And I would like to also continue with the P4 Initiative, which is also—it was also spearheaded by the EDC. The EDC has already assisted me in moving forward to discussions on the 100 acres. The EDC would also—if we were able to get in a business that was a commercial business into the city and they were qualified for incentives, they would lead that charge. And I think it's important that we provide that opportunity to any future businesses in our city. I do think we'd get a lot out of the membership. I've already gotten a lot out of my relationship with the EDC. I worked with them very closely when I worked in Titusville, so I have that relationships already. But again, if you, you know, you keep asking for services and you're not part of the organization, it makes it hard. So I would prefer if we were part of the organization. So I'd recommend that we do that.
Thank you.
When do we want to address that?
I need you to give me a vote so we can budget $2,500 for that.
Oh, you're going to butt—you're going to budget it?
Yes.
Oh, we need—
I move that we become a member of the—
Vice Mayor Bryon. Discussion from council?
I think the first time I got involved with the EDC was as president of the Space Coast League, and they had a good relationship with the Space Coast League. Matter of fact, I remember the meeting up in Cocoa Beach when Linda Weatherman brought the whole concept forward. So it does work well with the cities. I think this would be a smart move, I really do.
I also think it's good from this—what I saw today, and I attended a couple of the P4 Initiative meetings, is that I think it'll really be able to help us in our CRA district, you know, connect businesses to the city a lot better than we've done in the past, or at least help us out in different ways. And I'll bring some up because it's more related to the CRA tomorrow, but we are drawing people to our city. If you look on a weekend here, there are people coming using facilities here. And I think if we can captivate that for the businesses and show them that these people are here spending money, and I think we'll be better off in helping the CRA district out. So I think it's worthwhile.
And I would like to invite Linda Weatherman to come and give us a presentation on EDC and how we would fit in and, you know, what the mutual benefits would be. I think that would be very interesting, and I think our residents would—
She's a very energetic lady.
She's great.
I'm certain she'd be willing to do that. She's done it for the Space Coast League, so—
I'd be glad to make that request.
Okay, good.
Any further comment from any council? Okay, none, Lamar?
Who's that?
Me.
Vice Mayor Bryon.
Councilman Deenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryon?
Yeah.
Councilman Deenan?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, thank you. That was a pretty interesting meeting today. A lot going on, and I hopefully we can captivate on some of that.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Award Presentation by the Police Department. Chief?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Steve? As we all know, I made the announcement that Officer Steve Olmwood was the Satellite Beach Police Officer of the Year for 2012. And I was contacted by the commander at the VFW who wanted to personally give his plaque and their recognition to see for his accomplishments during 2012. And I told him that I would be better than that, that I enjoyed the opportunity anytime to showcase the folks that we had in Satellite Beach. And I said, "If it'd be okay with you, I'd like to present it on his behalf in front of the Satellite Beach City Council as many citizens as we could get." And he was actually thrilled to know that not only would the City Council know that the VFW stands squarely behind the city, the City Council, and us, but how much they value and appreciate what the Police Department does for them. So he was thrilled to be able to have me present this on his behalf and the law enforcement and maintaining perseverance, protecting the welfare of our citizens by the values of the four most in the United States, post-43 Satellite Beach law enforcement. I just wanted to close by saying that it's fantastic when you have someone like Steve. I said that last night. That you wish you could get up 10 of them, as they say, just the kind of person that does everything and all that. You know, I can come up with numbers and all kinds of things that might sound impressive, but that's not all the way it's all about, is that it's the impact, it's what you—who you see and how you interact with those people. Steve really exemplifies that, and I'm just proud to acknowledge it. And the VFW is extremely happy when they heard the selection as well, as they have chosen, and they found nothing but professionalism, which is what all of our folks bring in. Every year, it's probably one of the most difficult decisions to see who's going to be the law enforcement officer of the year at Satellite Beach. But I will tell you that Steve joined our department in 2007. He was the runner-up in 2008, and he was the—
Steve, thank you very, very much for your service to our city. Greatly appreciated. Thank you. Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on, at this time, with council's permission, I'm going to move Agenda Item Nine, which is the Comp Plan Amendment, up. And I'll open up a public hearing. And this is on ordinance number 1066, and I'll read it. Ordinance number 1066, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan based on the city's updated data and analysis, which includes amendments to the text of the future land use, transportation, housing infrastructure, coastal management/conservation, recreation, and open space, intergovernmental coordination, capital improvements, community appearance, and public school facility elements of the 1998 comprehensive plan as amended. To revise and update the existing goals, objectives, and policies in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 8's amendments to the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, State Land Planning Agency, and other applicable agencies for review and comments as required by the Florida statute, providing a conflict clause and severability clause, and providing an effective date. And this is a second reading.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. LaRue.
Jim LaRue, for the record, your planner for your comprehensive plan and your planning issues. Again, the mayor was able to read the history of this. Quite honestly, over a year and a half, probably almost two years in the making in terms of the Comp Plan amendments, most of you will remember in 2011, the new legislation and state legislation was passed to give local governments a little bit more flexibility in terms of some of the planning issues that were about. There were less rules of 9J5 language that Courtney and I are familiar with and would have given her gray hair, but it certainly did give me gray hair, some of the articulation that we had in ORC reports and those things. There are—there were opportunities, and we saw those opportunities. It also was within 2010, I believe, was an update of the—or new definition of coastal high-hazard areas. And we have been limping along with a map that upset a lot of people that showed different areas that were coastal high-hazard that are no longer, but we didn't have our map updated, so that's an interesting issue that's in there. We had the opportunity to pursue economic development policies, and you'll remember that we had things that were not in our Comp Plan before, having to do with hotels and a general mixed-use category and all these things for the benefit of the public that are here tonight. We had LPA hearings in January, February, 2013. We had several workshops. We had a February workshop for the council. We had a March transmittal public hearing from the council for the Comp Plan. And we're finally at the end of it where this is the adoption. There was very little comments. You've got a backup memo from me that gave you the three or four pertinent comments. Not that any agency reviewing it is not making pertinent comments, but there were only a few that I thought worthy of changes or revision. You have a backup memo in front of you that I'm going to read from if I can and just go over a couple of items, and then we'll go back to any that you want to revisit. But in our—excuse me—in our general mixed-use category, one of the comments—and let me stop right there. It used to be in the old days when you did a Department of Community Affairs, now it's DEO. When they put something in and work, it was very difficult for you to respond at times, but you knew what it was because it was in the ORC report. Now they simply do comments. So if there are comments that are made in the review process, which is a little easier than there is in an ORC report, that's the good news. The bad news is when you get comments from an agency like DOT, you go, hmm, what does that mean? When it comes time for adoption, are we going to get a complaint from them because it's this comment, it's not an ORC report? So that is one of the issues. But nevertheless, you're supposed to respond— But nevertheless, you're supposed to respond to comments that are pertinent, and that's what we've done. I didn't mean to give you a long, but for the benefit of the audience, they probably don't realize the transition is a little bit easier, but it's a little scarier for us as planners because when you got an ORC report, you grumbled and mumbled, but at least you knew what was there that you had to pay attention to. Anyway, sorry about taking that. Forgive me for that. But anyway, in the general mixed-use, one of the comments was that when you had a general mixed-use category, not our special one, but our general mixed-use category that could go into different areas, it could go into the 100 acres, it could go into other areas that would be possible for us. We didn't actually say what the limits were of the uses that could go in there. In other words, what is the maximum that you would have residential? What is the maximum you'd have commercial, et cetera? So we've got language that puts us in a position, commercial space within a building in the same parcel, should bind yourselves, you have some flexibility, but at the same time you don't have residential dominate. You remember our concern, and you've preached to me about not wanting to have the residential dominate, and that is what we've done in terms of that, that language. That was one of the comments. The second comment that DEO commended us for doing the adaptation action area language under the 2011 legislation, one of the cities that has done that, also the DA, DEO had said, "Are you getting ready? We would like to suggest that you should pick an area that would be an area, an actual specific area for included in an action, adaptation action area." And pointing to a policy 1.12A2 where we designate the adaption, adaptation action areas as the areas that are consistent with the coastal high hazard area and other areas that the city has may be identified by the council in the future as being subject to coastal erosion, flooding, sea level rise, or damage to environmental systems. Our comment on that is we leave it the way it is because we haven't done the implementation of that. Our suggestion is when you get through with a comp plan, this is the, if you will, the enabling legislation to do the adaptation area, but you will, and you probably should direct us within so many months of the adoption of this policy, to put something in the LDR that would, would better define what areas could be possibly included, because you don't want to be putting an area in here and upset people when you don't have the criteria that would be implementing criteria. That comes next. But you can't have implementing criteria unless you have the, the legislation policy, if you follow what I'm saying. So that's necessary for that. So we, we answer them in the sense that, no, we're not going to do an action area now because it would be premature, you don't have the criteria set up, so you would not do that. And the next comment that they had was a simple one that had to do, and Courtney talked about the school concurrency, and keep school concurrency. The only item that they talked about was that in one of the policies, there was an old designation of tables, and we, language that would not put us having to do something year after year, putting dates in, but would be allowed to be new, and that's very simple. Policy 1.14, commercial services, this is where we had the language that allowed us to have hotels, motels. And I don't like to change language at all once we have things that have already been transmitted, but I do believe instead of transient, let me read you the, our new language, including what we have now, transient lodging facilities, which term includes hotels, motels, bed and breakfast establishments. I would just use the word tourist rather than transient. Again, that kind of change is not, is not tough on DEO, but if you're okay with that, that's the only correction I would have on that. And in policy 1.14, I don't know if you remember what we had before, but you remember, again, this is hotel motel use that would be not in the commercial area or the mixed-use, but would be in residential areas. We didn't want to confuse people by them thinking they're done in residential areas are generally a point five rather than a full unit. In other words, a hotel unit itself is considered to be a half, a half a unit. So that, so we put it that way so we don't alarm people and go, "Oh, my gosh, you're, you're trying to do something that would be in 11 units density, you're going to be 22, and then 22, you're going to do 44." So I hope I haven't confused you on that. But your hotel units, when you use them in residential areas, will count as a half a unit, and that's the normal. My planner over here can say that...
Well, I think I just wanted to have a discussion with them on that idea at all.
Yes.
So whenever you're ready.
That would be good.
Good, okay. I think when we, when we had developed the general mixed-use category, we were looking and we were envisioning a mixed-use project, particularly probably in the 100 acres or in that general area. And if you're looking at a hotel, today's hotels that we would like to attract to our city, you're going to look at commercial uses that are included within the hotel uses. If you allow the hotel in the high-density residential, you can't put commercial uses in there, it's a residential category. So then you're encouraging unit-only hotels, which, you know, we have height limits in the, many of the areas of the city, so we're encouraging unit-only hotels with a low height limit. And, you know, there's only a couple of hotel models that fit that, and I'm not real sure the commercial uses and the commercial amenities that go along with that, with the conference space and the restaurant and so on, because a hotel uses in residential category would have to be, you know, really the unit only. The second issue is that you're kind of opening the door to, you know, short-term rentals, seasonal rentals, that type of thing within your, your multifamily districts, which, you know, also open the door for other uses that are kind of marching up the state like sober homes and things like that. I'm not real sure we want to encourage that either. So I think it would be better if we focused our hotel uses on the general mixed-use category, because I think that's the type of development that we're looking for when it comes to hotels.
And in that case, you would actually not have that language in the residential. We would keep, and just so we're clear, you'll have two places where you would have, actually have hotels, you'd have straight commercial, and of course you have mixed-use in those two categories.
Right.
And that, and our concern, and I forgot to mention the fact that you got 35 feet is the height limits you have in the residential, and when you really think about it, it's fairly limiting for, for residential, and that's something that we probably could have... I don't think there's going to be any problem in us just deleting that based on that, but it's up to you.
Three-story, unit-only hotels or travel lodges?
Yeah.
That's what you're going to get.
Counsel?
I'm not interested in seeing hotels in our residential...
Okay. Well, I think through, and we, and to be honest with you, one of my thoughts at the time was, wasn't, I wasn't really thinking about the 35-foot height limit.
Yeah.
When you start doing that, you...
Yeah, well, I'm thinking more than just the height, I'm thinking about the residents, and I don't want to be at the end of their lynching mode.
Right, right.
I don't think our residents would care for that.
It's, it's easy enough if you allow us to go ahead and the part of the 1.1.4 would be deleted, the new language about the hotel use in the residential.
Okay, so you're saying just completely delete, delete policy 1.14, and then does, does this, what we want to do, is it taken care of in someplace else?
Right, right. This, this is just the residential section part we're talking about.
Okay.
You would still, the general mixed-use would accommodate a hotel.
Right.
That, that district would accommodate a hotel.
Right, and in the commercial, so you know, it kind of piggybacks. The commercial, we've allowed it legal, that's why we...
Okay, and so the wording that we have in the mixed-use area takes care of what we want, we don't need to add something to substitute for this?
No.
We can just delete this and be happy?
Delete this and be happy, and just remember that commercial services above allows the hotel...
The residential category just opens that commercial door, and, you know, when, when, and I remember this clearly, when we designed the, the short-term rental ordinance, we specifically kept west of A1A out of that scenario. And so, you know, adding the hotel uses in there kind of erases that, that argument. You know, you'd have to allow short-term rentals. I mean, and you, you have to understand that when you're sitting there talking, it's really about the law. I mean, if you're allowing hotels, then you really have no leg to stand on to say you're not going to allow short-term rentals. So you don't, you know, so...
It gets worse, yeah, it gets worse.
It, you know, you have to be consistent in what you're, you're applying to.
Quite honestly, it's probably been more restrictive in that vein in over the past six months or a year than it was when we even started to do this.
Right.
So again, just to clarify, the policy 1.14 above where it says commercial services, where it would now be tourist lodging facilities, which term includes hotels, motels, bed and breakfast establishments, and that, of course, commercial is allowed in mixed-use, and that's how you get the hotels.
Okay, and I want to, I want to talk about that one, too.
Do we get consensus on the first one?
Sure, yeah.
Consensus from council?
Consensus that we delete the residential use of hotels.
Yes. All right. Well, including tourist lodging facilities, which term includes, and then it says hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast, I would like us to insert the word only so that we'd say which term includes only hotels, motels, because the way I read this, to me at first, I read it as it includes this, might also include some other stuff, and we don't want other stuff.
That's not much of a change from what we had, so that's...
So, so it'll be which term includes only hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts. And then that makes it very clear that's, that's what we're intending.
Counsel?
Yeah, that's fine.
Counsel, one, Dan?
Okay.
Another item to, to remind you of that we have done is, remember that we reformatted our, our future land use map? There was some input that ugly, no, I shouldn't say ugly, black and white, but the black and white that we had before in the different subcategories, we want to make sure on the record that none of the future land use categories were, were changed or anything that would require a publication in the future land use map at all. But what we did do is we remastered it. We've gone through, and again, I want to thank John Stone, who's been through quite a bit of, I would just say that as we handed in as an adoption, we'll run through them one more time just to make sure that we're okay. But I wanted you to be aware that these changes, even though they're technical nature and, and technical in nature, it gives you now a full GIS future land use map that you can use in your CRA or any other thing, and it's yours. It's not something you get charged for, it's your, it's your map. But anyway, I think, I think it updates. And not to, not to repeat or go over all the other items that we had, but we only had these items that were brought up. I see no reason in the adoption hearing to go back through everything again. It's all the words that we had, and I'll shut up and be quiet and answer any questions that you might have.
I have more questions.
Please.
By the way, I want to compliment you on these, all your maps, they are beautiful. Wait, wait until you all see these things online, they're gorgeous. You really see the city in a whole new light. On the policy, I'm on the first page of your memorandum.
Yes, ma'am.
Under policy 1.14, the bottom line of that says, "A building on the same parcel shall not be less than 25% of the total enclosed space." And I'm the first to admit, I have trouble thinking mathematically. Verbally is fine, mathematically doesn't cut it. So if you would look on page 1-2 of the comp plan that we have here, and... 1-2.
Yes, ma'am.
Look at the very bottom, under general mixed-use, it says, "Commercial space within a building on the same parcel, parcel shall not be less than 25% of the enclosed..." Wait a minute, I'm sorry, go to the next page. Under town center mixed-use.
Right, and that's a little different.
It says residential space must not exceed 50% of the total enclosed space. Are those two concepts complementary, or are they contradictory?
They're not inconsistent.
They're not inconsistent, okay, I'm happy. All right.
Your friendly planner manager and I did talk about that subject.
Okay, then I just had a question on page two of your memorandum. At the top, under objective four, this is under the capital improvements policy.
Yes, ma'am.
I couldn't find where that objective four, I don't see it in here. What am I missing?
The objective four was in the public schools facilities element, maybe that's why?
Oh, public schools.
Yeah, and so it was objective four in the public schools facilities element, and that, that was the two places that they...
Page 10-6.
Should have been better by...
Thank you.
Anyway, that's what we have as a full package, and any corrections when we need to make? Any questions before I turn it over to public input?
Thank, yeah, we'll have council, maybe have some questions for it. Bring it back to council, who would like to start?
I have a, and really just for informational purposes, the 100 acres, the designation is, is still residential. Would you mind explaining why it's remaining residential and the impact it has on development?
Well, we did before, and let me explain it again. The reason you do on future land use map change, you want to make sure that you have all the participants involved, because you don't want to end up, it's not our property, we would sponsor that. So we want to make sure that you don't aggravate people in the public hearing when, that you, we decide initially in a closed, not a closed, in a public hearing that we would designate something industrial, commercial, or whatever it is, without making sure that the owner... Plus, you remember we had conversations when I did the, the Air Force amendments, you remember, and they said that they, they wanted to participate, and there would be some changes, but they wanted to be involved. So you've got, you know, economic development people, you've got owners, you've got the Air Force base, you've got people that could be leasing from the developer, you could have three or four parties plus us, but you do not want to put something on it without making sure you have that full input. And then you subject people that could be near that to something that could be not what it is and get them alarmed without knowing for sure. So that, that is, that is why. It's a pretty long process to do. You want to help me?
Well, the other is the, the, there may be a developer that comes through and only wants a portion of that parcel change, and that is going to largely depend on the height that they're wanting, and then whether they can get that up. If we designate something, I can just, I can already foresee it, we'll do it again. You know, it'll just come right back to us in a different format with the developer. And I think a lot of times, I would recommend after the budget is approved, that we do get together as a workshop, because in looking at that property and our charter, we, we have to come to agreement with the city council on what you were willing to approve, because once a developer purchase that, purchases that property, they will likely have to put, you know, quite a bit of money down on, to, to hold it, and then it's about a year to go through charter amendments, comp plan amendments, permitting, and all the advertising, the engineering work. And by the time they get to the charter, I mean, they're probably in to the project by a million dollars. So that's a lot of effort for a developer to go through to get to here, and then you guys say no. So we need to have some agreement on what you all want to see on the property before, you know, I know what to do, too. So if we get a development in, I could guide them to a good development. So I think in that case, we've got a long ways to go before we can even talk about what we're going to put on the property. And also, the other issue, too, is, you know, developers, there's always new ways of developing that come through that we don't know about. Developers have, you know, always exciting designs and things like that, that if we put the designation on the property, we might be limiting their, and then go through the comp plan amendments with them. So that would be my recommendation.
It's more complex than you think. You know, build it and they'll come, but in this case, leased government is better in this case.
I do have another question. I was, Jim, I was hoping you could help me pinpoint somewhere, I lost my mark, but talks about reviewing the LDRs and the comp plan every three years. I thought we had a discussion that, that was too often because of the burden that it puts on staff, so I just want to make, and I did lose my mark, a lot of marks in here.
I think you did.
So I just want to make sure that, I thought we talked about at least five...
I'm pretty sure he did make some changes.
And if I remember, I was going through it, it was three. So I just want to note that, make sure that that's...
I remember seeing it stricken out going, "Oh, thank God."
Yeah, yeah, we did, because that was in the workshop.
Okay, I thought it was still in here. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it is.
Because it was in the workshop, and I picked it up this night.
Thank you.
I'll try to find it before I end this.
And then the infamous adaptation action area. I know I've spoken against the adaptation action area being added into the comp plan as enabling legislation in the past, and if you look at figure 1-2, there is nowhere in the SLOSH model that is an, is an upland portion of... of the city of Satellite Beach, and there is great concerns when it comes to adaptation action areas, because there are three strategies for adaptation action, which is protection, accommodation, and retreat, and I've seen a past ordinance that was created by the comprehensive planning advisory board, where they actually talk about accommodation and raising structures, existing structures, to accommodate the sea level rise, and also retreat, where they talk about transfer of development rights, so if there is a sea level rise in 40 or 50 years, that if structures are destroyed, they would have to be transferred to a different area. So, I know it's caused quite a stir out there in the community, my phone has been ringing off the hook, and I think, given the fact that the sea level has not risen, and the storm surge of category 1 doesn't affect any upland, I think we should strike it from the comp plan at this time and add it at a future date. With that, I'd like to have.
I think we'll go through council, and then we'll open it up for public.
I'd like to have that workshop, I really would, I think, I think that's one of the most common questions I get, is what's going on with that property, why hasn't it moved, or what direction is it going? And I, yeah, let's get that going as soon as we can, please, that's my comment.
I just have one more question, if you would go to page 8-6, it's that five-year scheduled capital improvements, is, do we update this annually in the comp plan?
Yes, indeed.
You do.
Okay.
And you do it by ordinance now, you don't have to, you don't do it by comp plan, you can do it by ordinance, your five-year, five-year, and the reason we're holding off on doing that is we'll also include the school action plan within that, so by November or so, you'll see the ordinance that will update it from this point.
Okay, what does that do to the comp plan? If I'm a resident and I want to see the comp plan, I don't want to go see a piece of paper that's out of date, and I don't know that I have to go to ordinance so-and-so to find out what the latest.
Well, no, it'll be in the comp plan, but it's done by ordinance, and then it just, and they don't get to review it, no offense to them.
Yeah, okay.
We don't send it up for review.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean that way.
Okay, and refresh my memory, what parts of the?
Your drainage, not your police or your fire, but your drainage, your parks and recreation, you generally have, but your CRA projects go in as well.
Capacity improvements.
Capacity improvements, generally, you're in transportation, drainage, you've done CRA projects that involve both, you know, and so those are the kinds of recreation and open space, those are the ones, and then, of course, you keep school concurrence, so that school action plan is involved as well, so there's about four areas.
Okay.
We really should have project, or things in here, like the solid waste improvements and stuff that affect the city as well, so we'll be looking at the.
We, having an ally now, we'll see probably more of those things, and for it was not that interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
Yeah, good job.
I do have a question, you want to go first?
Go ahead.
One other question, I did have it written down here, how, if the adaptation action plan is implemented, how would it decrease flood insurance rates, because that was stated? Explain that, because I've been asked that question.
Well, you can end up, at any point, you can end up having different, that would be possibly low-line areas that would be helpful, you can have those kinds of things that would be positive for insurance. Your implementation will be, of course, how you would measure, what criteria you would look at, and that would be consistent, of course, with the state statutes.
I do have questions on the adaptation area, so there is state statute on how that is to be implemented, is that the?
Well, the criteria that the state has, there are, and I think I passed out to you, under 163, 3164, they, and we have that as part of one of our policies in the plan that was called out, that gives the designation and the coastal management element of the local area, which identifies one or more areas that experience coastal flooding that are due to extreme high tides and storm surge, and are vulnerable to related impacts of rising sea levels, for the purpose of prioritizing funds for infrastructure needs and adaptation planning. That's one of the clauses that they refer to in the comp plan and enabling, and the others in storm surge that could be vulnerable would be, could be in the adaptation area, and what you would do from this point, because these two policies are in your comp plan now, under the adaptation area, you would then define what you would mean by the high tides or whatever that would be possibly selecting a spot, and it would go through the public hearing process, either through the LDRs, as we talked about, and so at this point, you would further define what you would be talking about, an area that would need grant help, or anything of that sort, in terms of the adaptation area.
Do we, let's say this is in here, do we have to now set the procedure?
No, what you're doing, you have implementation procedure that would be followed after this, that would be in your LDRs.
So, we have to do that through our LDRs app?
Yes, yes, you remember how, you remember how you have the enabling legislation, if you will, and you have your implementation criteria, because.
And then we need to set that.
That's right, and I would assume that once we do this, you would direct staff that within so many months, six months or whatever, go through, you go through your planning board, or go through staff, that you would have criteria of which you would measure this, because right now, what does it mean by high tide, what is, you know, what is an area that possibly could be in that, and you have indicators, and then you would have that, everybody would have public hearings to know what those are, because this language, to be consistent with enabling the legislation, would have to be more particular now, so that you would know, you wouldn't want to do it now, because you don't know what they would be.
Right, so, the first step here, one of my, a little bit of a problem here is, we've got something that we don't have a procedure to implement, so is the first step here, you have to put this in the plan, then you implement the procedure?
That is right.
Okay.
That's right, because the procedure has to be consistent with these two sections of the statute, one is that it must meet the criteria of the adaptation area, and that's part of our policy in the plan, and the second one is making sure that you have the areas that are designated, that are experiencing coastal flooding, or numerous kinds of things, but you would have to then indicate what you mean by that, and what experience, you can't have that now, because you don't know what, you don't know what that is, I mean, it's like implementing something before you have the policy.
Going back to the map councilman Deven showed where it did not, a level one, yep, did not cause flooding, so at this point, when we implement these procedures, that could be one of the criterias, that if it doesn't go underwater in that particular instance, that could be the minimum.
It doesn't go underwater.
So, therefore, it would not be part, or could not be part of an ad.
You have the criteria that would be measured, and if they don't measure up to that criteria, and that's one, then there's, then it wouldn't be in the adaptation area.
Right, so, we can't create that until we put this in.
That's right.
Okay.
It's hard to implement something when you don't have it there at the first.
And the other thing on this is, I don't like things hanging out there, so if we do this, I want to make sure that we have a timeframe that we add the second element to this.
The implementation process.
Amen, because I just don't like to have something that's sitting there.
And I would recommend that, you could set a six-month, oh, I don't want to speak for the manager, manager can tell you how long you want to have to do it.
I mean, I would do it fast.
Is this, let me ask you a question from the state standpoint, because when I read what the state EO came back.
Right.
It said, you know, they commend, they commend this action, now, is this the direction that the state is taking for its coastal and or inland areas that are prone to flooding or natural, is this what, maybe not now, but a year or two, they're going to?
They're concerned with this being important, and you've had studies that have been done that are showing data that would look at this more seriously than before, so it is something that's important, I know my area of Lee County, they've done quite a bit of it as well, so it's a little different kind of deal from the real.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, we circle around this and have it right for the citizens, and that we just don't have an open end.
Oh, I.
And right now, I look at it and go, okay, you're telling me that if I don't put it in here, I can't go to part B, I need it in here to go to part B, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You have the implementation without the.
Excuse me, thank you.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
If we went to, if we did this and went to part B, you could provide direction tonight that, because, I mean, I can see the fear there, and I can understand that, with the retreat strategies, is one regulations, that included using the retreat policy only for severe issues like loss of infrastructure and existing development, so where, we wouldn't implement anything like that unless there was a severe issue, such as a loss of infrastructure and existing development. The reason why I say that is because, you know, that.
Define that, though, loss of, just define what that is.
If your road is falling apart because of the, you know, the A1A is now, the beach is on A1A, I mean, it's some pretty severe impacts, because, you know, retreat, in terms of talking about transfer of development rights, purchase of development rights, rolling easements, conservation, all of those have severe impacts on property rights, and that's a big deal for us, that, you know, so I think we need to take a pretty close look at that and make sure our land development regulations very specifically identify when we would use those strategies, that's a big deal.
Again, that's why I guess I'm, what I fear is, it has to be under the extreme circumstance, it can't, and that's where I'd like to make sure that.
And then you would see those, anything in the LDRs, you would see, and you'd have workshops on before you would pass that criteria, and you would see that criteria, and know whether or not there would be examples that you would look at, of how you would interpret that, and you could drop particular language out of that if it wasn't working.
Because one of my fears is, if it happens once, it doesn't necessarily mean, it could happen again, but if it happens 100 years from now, that one time, I don't want that to dictate, you know, a total change.
And you would have to see that language before you would be.
I'm reading a pretty interesting book that gentleman Dr. Ken here gave me, I had a meeting with him, and very interesting on theories of sea level rise and sustainability for the future, and I just want to make sure we're in the right spot, so if it's grants that we can get, because we have this language in here, okay, but I just don't want arbitrary have it without a base for it, so that's kind of my.
We would understand that.
He just made a hit on a word that I want to come back to about, tell me how this would work with grants and enhancing our ability to do that, is that, that's, I think that's pretty key.
It does, we're probably looked at as one of the ones that have taken advantage of this, if you end up having this continue to be something to be looked at from a scientific standpoint in the vulnerable areas of Florida, there are good possibilities of grants that would allow you to do certain things, that would bolster certain areas that could be vulnerable, and that's why there are more studies and things that we would have a leg on because of our work that we've already done.
Okay.
May I respond to that also, if, for instance, if we were applying for state money, it's not uncommon for preference to be given to applicants who have the things that they're looking for already in their governing.
Yeah, the addition of the adaptation action plan to the comp plan is an option, correct? It's not.
It's not mandatory.
Not mandatory, and then, I foresee a different, you're now discussing people's property rights, and I was just up at the Jersey Shore, and the severity that they're going through now, where they can't get flood insurance for an older structure, because it is now in their development regulations, that they have to elevate the structure in a lower, and they're severely low, the crown of the road is at five or six there, and then, and the veil is, the folks just can't afford to elevate the structures, and they have community buy-in, I think they have, I think the best way to do it is to have the workshop first. The comp plan is a moving entity, the land development regulations are an entity, they're not written in stone forever, and we can always add it to the plan later, and I'm going to stand with the business, and I think that it needs to be taken out of the land development regulations at this time, until there is community buy-in. It affects property rights, it can affect, potentially affect property values, and if that's the intent to say, hey, only in severe conditions, and present that to the public first, so they have a clear understanding, and then you can always do a comprehensive plan amendment and add it later, and adjust the LDRs. Again, we're, it says right in the LDRs, we're going to review them every five years, I don't, I don't see the sea level rising and inundating, inundating us at this point, and, in fact, I read the study, and the target, the tipping point is in 40 to 50 years, so I don't see the urgency in adding it at this time, and I think it's very, very important, given the amount of properties that are on the waterfront here, to make sure that there's community participation and buying before it's added to the, for the plan.
Any further comment from council? Here on in, this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Please, may I just state your name?
My name's still Tony Loiso, live in Satellite Beach, Florida. I'm kind of happy to hear what councilwoman was saying, because that's my feeling, before, this almost sounds like Obamacare, we'll pass it, and then we'll give up the regulations later, that's not what I want to hear, I want to hear that before we do this, we're going to do a comprehensive plan, and the first thing we're going to do is apply for state money, we're going to apply for federal money, we're going to do, we're going to build up whatever area it is, whether it's a river, the beach, inland, we're going to, we're going to try to target and do whatever we can to save these properties, because if you pass this now, you talk about developers coming in, you want to build a hotel on the beach, and maybe the beach is going to run away, and then you're going to have to retreat, because the city's not going to, you know, you don't know what's going to happen down the road, so I'm like the councilwoman was saying, come up with, come up with something you can give to the residents and say, here's what we're going to do, if we have a big storm, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and if by God we can't do this, we'll do this, and as a last resort, this is what we're going to do. Then you come in with a comprehensive plan and say, here's our, here's our comprehensive plan, and we're going to do everything we can to save the river, we're going to save the beach, we're going to save inland, the canals, or whatever it happens to be, but, you know, I'll tell you what, I'm scared to death that if something like this passes through their house, and people can't sell them, so if they can't sell them, they can't buy them, there's no tax revenue, and this is just going to be vacant land, so I applaud you, it's very important, if we lose these properties because we don't make a concentrated effort to defend them, you talk about the school boards, you know, they're hurting for money, you lose tax, I mean, your homeowners is what's paying for your school taxes, and, you know, they just have to have a complete and clear understanding of what the procedure is, don't pass it now, and then say, okay, now we're going to come up with the regulations.
Further comment, thank you.
First of all, mayor, excuse me for speaking out, I'm just very passionate when it comes to something about my home and someone taking it, it's like trying to take my children, I'm very proud of my home, my name is Linda Loiso, and I live in Satellite Beach, the other half, and I've worked for government for over 33 years, I've sat on boards for comprehensive planning, and I'm very impressed with the plan that your planner did, I've lived on the east coast, and I'm very familiar with coastal, and I've also done research on the beach, and I know about the sea level rising, and I can tell you that we're all frightened about the sea level rising, because we know that we're trying to protect our properties, that every day, the state's coming up with new plans, I got a call today from a scientist that came up with something new, it's a fertilizer for your dune, and asked, can I do your beach as a pilot project, they still have contacts up in Tallahassee, to the landowners on the beach, to make sure that they protect them and their rights, as well as the inland rights, and I can tell you, I have one of the lowest, lowest flood insurance rates, it's lower than my kids that live inland, because they are more prone to flooding, so, because we have a good percolation factor on the beach, because the water goes into the sewer, want to know why I want to live on the beach? It's because I love living on the beach, and my point is that if they tell all those people, we're going to tell you now, we're no longer going to help you build, we're no longer going to give you FEMA money, we're going to make, you have to retreat, now, this is America, and I don't want to retreat, I want to do whatever I can, and I'll put whatever money I have to do for taxes, because I think this is a fabulous city, has the best police department, fire department, I love them, and that's a testimony to all of you and all of the predecessors for that, and I'm very proud to live here, but I really, really am begging you to not pass this portion of it, because here's the deal, I passed a lot of things, and I still sit on a pension board back in South Florida, passed a lot of things that were good, and then you get new people that come into office after you, and then you have to say, once you have that power, and you've legislated, that the five people that will sit here after you, because you put it as part of your plan, they're going to deem, maybe the disaster's a little different for retreat, well, you know what, all that sand came onto the ocean, and that house, like the one further down by the cafe, that house was really almost in the water. the cafe, that, that, that house was really almost in the water. Yeah, that, that, that's retreat, we'll relocate you. Now, that's like eminent domain. We need to be able to protect the land, we need to be able to protect the homeowners. We're part of this city, and I really am asking that you do that. I'm sure you have the wisdom to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Yes, sir.
I'm a member, a member of CPAB for a few years. Number one on the hotels business, if we say only hotel motel and breakfast, does that exclude a conference center? If so, we've got a problem. Moving on to the topic of interest, triple As. I am absolutely dumbfounded. We have been working for years trying to have their home or their business, and yet the thanks we get is, we don't want it, we're afraid you're going to steal our home, or God knows what. New Jersey, the Jersey Shore was mentioned. I grew up there. The problem with post Sandy is those folks did not plan for a killer storm. How many years has been since Katrina hit New Orleans? How many of those neighborhoods continue to be nothing? They don't produce taxes, they don't house people, they're a disaster area. Why? They did not plan, just didn't plan. And comments were made about it would allow people to raise homes or to force you to move, TDRs. You know, if you have the right policies in place, after the insurance company has given you less than what your property is worth, and you're looking at rebuilding, and by the way, and I'll run over the three minutes if I go into the details, the flood insurance rules have changed, the premiums are skyrocketing, and there's no more repeat losses. You get it once, you're done. Okay? So you get three foot of water in your house, you get reimbursed to clean it up, guess what happens the next time? Nothing, because you've run out of your insurance. The intent here is to be able to develop specific policies and means of adjusting to protect the people when the big one hits, so that the city doesn't lose tax base, so the people don't lose their biggest investment. And I find it interesting that the mention was made at the low five and six foot elevations. The elevation of the intersection of Cassia and South Patrick Drive is below three feet, and every October, the sea level in this area rises one foot, which puts it less than two feet above the standing water level. That's during the hurricane season. And when you talk about opportunities, the city got $25,000 in DEO to look at A-1A this year. That's an annual grant, and I have been contemplating that if we had AAA in the policies, that we could possibly go and actually get them to help us. Said, we got millions of dollars, and there are lots of policies in the comp plan that were put there solely for the reason of attracting grant dollars, all there for only one reason, to attract money. And I think it worked pretty well. And so, I don't know. If folks don't want it, and we don't get it, so be it.
Thank you. Public comment still open.
Ken Lindeman, 45, Glenwood Avenue, Satellite Beach, Florida. By the way, the last speaker was a career Army vet and has a PhD in geology. We have, we, as a group, I don't know how many CPAB members, I was looking around to see how many CPAB.
One in the water.
No, yeah. Ken, you need to wrap. Excuse me, thank you. That was useful. There's a few. There's been two to three years of data review and detailed discussion, two to three years of, of data review, information, and it's been very open. And I tried really hard, and I think we tried really hard to get the data right. So for the record, I would like to make two comments about the statements from the counsel woman. She first said, if SLR happens in 40 to 50 years, please look at the most basic literature before you.
I have your literature.
It's happening. That's all, there's millimeters and eventually center, forget, inches are happening soon, it's going to increase. It's happening, so that's incorrect. But then the next thing, you said, given that sea level rise, the sea level has not risen. Please be accurate. Please go into, go into any, go to the American Geophysical Union website, 70,000 geophysical scientists, we know it's happening, and it's going to accelerate. Thank you. I know you're trying. There's also been two to three years of information processing, and it was open. We issued calls for people. I see the chair of the CPAB issued calls. The key, the primary two individuals that keep going after the eight or nine individuals were not at the majority of these meetings, and I'm going to state that as a matter of fact also. So please, just don't say that this wasn't open. Okay. The, the details of what we're doing, these land use plan updates, use principles from the entire professional disciplines. Very cleverly, the word retreat was introduced early, the word taking was introduced early. There is a plan, it's, it's, it's been said, we don't have to keep repeating it. We are using basic principles of land use planning, which is a discipline, stormwater management, which is a discipline, and floodplain management. There's a, go look at the website of the American National Association of Floodplain Managers. You get ratings. Mr. Stone is rated. A good question was asked, how does this reduce, how could this reduce property tax, excuse me, property insurance rates? Just go to community rating system, community rating system. There's a 5% decrease in policies, there's a 5% decrease in policy with every step, from step nine to step one. 5% off your policy. We're at eight, we've got a ways to go. This would bump us, this would bump us down, which is good, down is good. These ideas are designed to protect fiscal solvency of all actors. I heard that there is, the local government has a fiduciary responsibility. Yes, but there's a lot of complicated issues there, and how long will that fiduciary responsibility be endless? We are trying to think ahead. Whether you, AAAs, infamous AAAs, and retreat and takings, and all these words were put out there, guys, whether you call them AAAs or XYZs, these are fundamental land use tools, akin, for example, to overlay zones. There are books about overlay zones. This is not some radical thing people just invented. Okay? So this is land use planning and a lot of other things. We're working with American know-how to think into the future. To close, the proposal that AAAs can potentially lower property values misses they will expand our funding opportunities and funding opportunities by subsidizing overdevelopment in areas that are going to be highly threatened and that already are. It's not the CPAB. They've been 70, 70, 70, or, excuse me, 71, 71, 71, on all of these votes as we've gone through this. Okay? So two to three years of work, we're going to throw it away, and we're not going to get the sea level rise, the most basic information, right. If you want to debate it, I'd be happy to, for a few minutes.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
My colleagues on the CPBA, CA, excuse me, Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, they, they've put up some good arguments. The problem with it is, tonight, we're trying to see that it's going to allow the people on the city council to identify an area that apparently the state has told us that it would be a good idea to identify, but that we don't want to, I think that Jim said, because it might upset people. I, I don't understand that. I think that we should go back and, and take the these learned people that we have and, and use them to actually draw up a plan. The sea level rise plan that was made by Dr. Parkinson stated that after they get the legal basis that they can, that the city can go ahead and identify that adaptation area, then they're going to do an adaptation management plan. Let's, let's do that, let's take these people that we have and have them draw up an adaptation management plan. They talked about all this information that went out, but it's not in a coherent actual plan. Let the people see what the plan is. Also, was said tonight that, that the, you know, the words taking and all of this and retreating are, are in error or inflammatory. But these words exist in some of the, in some of the minutes of the sea level rise, and this is why I'm afraid, I'm concerned about these policies being passed, because there are people who have, who have written these things down and thought that these were valid ideas. One of them was, "The city will investigate means without engaging in takings to encourage property owners to proactively remove private capital assets from coastal erosion or flood-prone zones based on projections of sea level rise." It's not taking, they're saying they're not going to take it, but they're going to actively engage, encourage property owners to move, and they, and in the same meeting, it was talks of TDRs, transferred development rights. One of the gentlemen that spoke tonight, Professor Lindeman, he wrote a paper for the 62nd Gulf and Caribbean Fisheries Institute, and in that abstract, he talked of the Satellite Beach Advisory Board and how it's generating many sea level planning edits to the coastal element. He also says that a conservative approach implies that we should prepare before it is too late, an increased focus on sea level rise adaptation, including strategic relocation, which equals strategic withdrawal or retreat. So now, while this may not be on a plan, it is the thinking of the people that we have, that I believe will be making the plan, that will be drawing up our adaptive management plan. So the questions I have for the council is, who's going to draw up the adaptive management plan? What parameters are they going to use? When is it going to be put out? Where is it going to cover? The adaptation management plan, adaptation action plan, we don't know what it's going to cover. I, I'm afraid, I'm concerned, by giving you nice people the, the authority to decide whether my house is in an adaptation action plan, possibly subject to codes and enforcement things in the future, that my neighbor might not be. It's just, I, I really feel that we should have the, the plan first. The city should give us its vision of adaptation and its adaptation management plan before we give it the authority to do, we don't know what. We, we don't know, and you're not the only people that are going to be sitting up there. Somebody said earlier, you guys are going to eventually leave, and we don't know what that next crew is going to want to do. So I, I hope that you at least send this back without these, adopting these, these policies this evening. I don't see a, a reason for a big rush for it. We worked for years, we can, we can go back. A lot of the information, if it's there, these same people can put it together and present it to the public.
Thank you, sir. Further comment?
Good evening, counsel. Ron Dragutis, resident, Satellite Beach. I agree with the first initial comments from the two individuals as far as what is going on with this plan, and I don't think, first of all, I don't think that even though, though there were meetings out there through the Comprehensive Planning Board in regards to these items showing up, but it's been going around in circles and circles and circles here, where we have strikeouts, strike-ins. I'm looking at a document that's posted online here that has got blue, red, strikes, unstrikes, and it's confusing for people, and this is not a clear document. When you talk about an adaptation plan with all these strikeouts here, and then a referral in one section where you're not even going to consider other state monies to be granted for redevelopment in the high coastal construction area, and then you turn around and say, but, well, we qualify for grants. Well, where do the grants come from? They come from other, other entities, mainly the federal government, the state governments, maybe even world organizations. I see that as an inconsistency here. Next thing, I know an organization that came out here, first of all, I'd like to look at one section here, 1.1.1.5, I believe it's, it talks about here that the city may purchase additional oceanfront land. I know an organization just recently, I believe, is in a contractual agreement with the city stating that they, they had monies contributed that, that they will not be used to purchase more land on the beach. I heard this council, in fact, infer the fact that they would not purchase additional land. But now we have the adaptation plan, we may have retreat, we may have something else here. We can potentially rebuild here, but we can't receive other monies again. Well, what does flood, what does flood insurance come from? Most of the residents on the beach have flood insurance, if not all. That's federal money. And if the council changes or somebody doesn't think this through, we may not qualify. And what if we don't have reserves in there for monies to receive from FEMA? This action adaptation plan needs to be taken out at this point, and we definitely have to have many more meetings with residents to where we're going with this. And just by the discussion of what's going on now, I can see the fear on both sides, on the ocean side and the riverside. Property values may just be devaluated, and I'd hate to think what people on Tortoise Island, or let alone Lansing Island, would.
Thank you. Any further comment on this agenda item?
Dale Abrams, resident. Could this situation create a possible class action regarding the AAA?
Further comment? This agenda item? Floor is still open. Here are none, back to counsel. Here are none, back to council. Council comments? Okay, I'll go after her.
It's hard to know how to respond to some of that. We need to proceed with this. The comments, I'm not even going to address all of the comments that were made. But some main points were that we need to take time with this. It's been hurried. This process has been in the works for approximately two years. So, and it's been through different boards and different meetings, many meetings, and people have had the opportunity to comment. Statement was made that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents, and that is absolutely correct. And I believe that by putting this in our city charter, I mean, in our campus state, is encouraging local governments to go in. And I don't think that anybody would accuse Tallahassee government now of being a bunch of flaming liberals. And even they are saying that this is a wise course to pursue. The comment that we need, many more meetings for buy-in. The buy-in will come at the implementation. And there was question, there were questions or comments about, you know, how is that going to proceed? It's going to proceed with this material going before P&amp;Z, Comprehensive Planning Board, whatever others, citizen advisory boards that are necessary. There will be many meetings involved in implementing this. And that's the time to make sure that we implement a policy and a procedure and a plan, an implementation plan, that our residents can buy into. It is absolutely critical that we have their buy-in. But putting something in place now that allows us to proceed with that process is certainly not harming anyone. It is a matter of proper prior planning. It sets us up to do the things that we need to do in order to wisely plan for this issue. And we need to, that's a simple one. You can find some lawyer anywhere to initiate anything, to include a class action. Good luck with that.
My lawyer is counsel.
Excuse him. Thank you. Council comments?
Just, I want to ask Jim a question. Jim, I want to dumb this down a little bit. Several years ago, we had a storm called Hurricane Floyd. It was bearing down, and it was supposed to come in somewhere in between Cocoa Beach and Melbourne, somewhere in there. It was a category four, category five, something like that. I was on council at the time, and I remember the last council meeting we had. We didn't expect to come back and see anything here. It was pretty clear that the beach itself was going to be gone, probably all the way over to the river. So I guess my question is with this AAA is, what we're kind of, what you're proposing here is that we would, this is a policy that would say that if we got a Floyd, we would do exactly what Councilwoman Gott just said. We would have an implementation plan that would deal with that. As such, this is just a policy. It doesn't have any teeth in it. It has to be worked through everything to move it forward, whether it's through Courtney, whether it's through the CPAB. It addresses all those issues that Ken brought up and that sort of thing about, what do we do in the event of? Is that, have I got a good understanding of that?
You do, because it's, you remember just the first part of the policy, 1.4A1, is the city shall initiate a public process to identify. By having that enabling legislation to identify, then the implementation process is how you go about identifying.
Okay. So with this, I'm just going to call it a policy in place that behooves the citizens to engage in this process and see where it goes forward in here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
This is a template, and from there, it goes with the citizens in building this forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And remember the other things that people are not here necessarily, but you remember, we had some policies that we've forgotten now in the coastal that we had said, this policy is not intended to prohibit or discourage maintenance or replacement of existing development in the coastal high hazard area. We had many policies in here based on input from the public that are other policies that give protection where people are talking about in terms of the maintenance of their property.
Okay.
So we've made some efforts at it.
Okay.
But this is just simply putting it in place.
Okay. But no teeth in it until it moves forward?
No.
Exactly. Okay.
Shall initiate a public process.
That's, okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Courtney, we had some discussions via email today. The sea level rise study was done in 2010. And I had a specific question. Did the city council ever adopt that plan? And you said it was accepted. What does that mean?
Similar to like the wage study, when you were presented the wage study, the city council accepted the study.
Okay, so they accepted it. But, and I've had a lot of discussion, is rising, and some people don't. That's just a fact. I read the study. I also read Mr. Lindeman's abstract that was, I believe it was the same year that he published. I still believe that the pyramid is upside down. I believe that there are a lot of property owners that could be affected by this adaptation action area. I feel like it's a runaway train. I think it is being done backwards. This is a small community. I don't think it would take much for us to present it to the community and have the community involved, just like we should do with all projects, including community redevelopment projects. It's kind of like, we're going to do this, and you're going to take it or leave it. And I don't like that approach to anything that's put in our comprehensive plan. I don't want to see the comprehensive plan used as a weapon. I think when you said it's premature to show it on the future land, you believe it's all about community participation. I did not come up with the words "protection," "accommodation," or "retreat." They're all standard adaptation action area words, published by the state of Florida and published throughout the country. And it is scary to the property owner that is in low-lying areas, or actually, from what I understand, Cassian de Soto is the lowest area. And I don't even have flood insurance, and I'm on the water, believe it or not. It's a scary endeavor. And I actually went back and looked through minutes, and there was the comment made by Councilman Chase, who was concerned about a property rights issue and the legality of doing an adaptation action plan. So I spent a lot of time on this, and I just think it's premature.
Mr. Lura, I'm going to ask you, kind of like Mr. Briermer, this has no teeth until we go to the next step, correct?
You have to have an implementation step for this.
Right. So this is going to go back to a board? And at that point, we could have all the public input we need. If nothing came out of that, because they could not come to a consensus, then basically, this article dies. Is that a correct statement?
You have no places that are designated.
Okay. So this is allowing us to get to that discussion. And at that point, as council, we could come back if it came to us and go, no, we don't have any in this area. And we could have all the public input, have these people as part of the process, correct? So this is just a policy with no teeth until we implement the next step, correct?
Is the enabling policy allowing to...
Or not. Or not. Okay.
You have the choice. If you do not agree to what it is, then it continues on. What is the language you have?
So if this stays in here, tomorrow morning, nothing changes.
Nothing changes. What does change is that we now have a new coastal high hazard area that takes currently areas that are in the city that should still show that they're in the coastal high hazard area, they're not. That's what would happen if you did not pass the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is it, again, when I first was reading this, I had talked to Courtney today that I didn't like it being an open end, because I didn't want it to drag close to it. Until we vote for it, it could be five or 10 years from now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to address John's comment regarding the conference center. On that policy 114, where we define tourist lodging facilities as hotels, motels, and bed-and-breakfast establishments, that would not preclude a conference center, would it?
No, it would not. It's part of the, typically part of the hotel aspect. And again, remember what happens, again, in implementing procedure. When you get to LDRs, you're going to have a little bit more work that would be done. You'd be explaining things that would be hotel, it's easy enough to do as well. But it would not preclude a conference center as part of it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
May I make a recommendation real quick? I would recommend that for the AAA, the adaptation areas, that the council provide the staff with a deadline to come back with an ordinance to implement. Because that way, it doesn't continue to drag on and on, because I can see that point.
Okay, I'd like this to be a two-part thing, rather than try and put all this in one motion. I'd like to address a motion on the ordinance. And on the ordinance itself, I wanted to ask a question. On page three of that ordinance, it talks about 31 days after the state land planning agency. So this whole thing needs to go back to the state one more time for the final blessing. Is that correct?
It does.
Okay. All right. Then I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 1066 on the second reading with the following amendments to exhibit A. That we delete in policy 114 the provision regarding hotel and motel use in high residential, high-density residential areas.
Yes, ma'am.
And that in policy 1.1.4, under commercial and services, that we insert the word "only" after which term includes, so that it would be transient, and also that we change the word transient to tourist, so that it will read, including tourist lodging facilities, which term includes only hotels, motels, and bed-and-breakfast establishments. That's my motion.
A second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Briermer. Further discussion?
Yep. I am not going to support the motion, not because I don't think a good job has been done on the comprehensive plan. I think the maps are wonderful. I think it's really been tweaked quite a bit, just because I'm not going to support the adaptation action area policy that's in the plan.
Further council comments?
Yes. What I'd like to ask for the citizens here, you've come out tonight and put your input. I would very much encourage you to come to the comp plan board and please help us make these procedures. I think it's important to get you involved. And this is, again, if this doesn't pass and we have no procedures, then it really has no teeth and it doesn't work. But we would very much like for you to be participants in it.
And I would add to that, if I may, that there's going to be, at least probably two boards that will be hearing, dealing with this, and they're going to have a bunch of meetings. And then the question was, if it was asked, if he makes the final decision, the council makes the final decision, and that would be based on input from our advisory boards. And so we really hope to see you at those advisory board meetings, as well as at our council meetings that discuss these things.
Can I ask a question? I know, I don't come from a lot of this, but I want to know how many people on these boards or on this council actually live on the oceans? Because my problem with this is that you've had a lot of people making decisions for people that are on the other side of the...
Ma'am, point order. I will find that information out for you, and we can discuss it after this.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you very much. The question I have is for Jim. Jim? Courtney's asking for direction on how to move this forward, timeframes, that sort of thing. I think a lot of citizens would probably benefit from either your recommendation on how this moves forward, because I know what Rain was going with her next motion. So I'd kind of like to hear your thoughts on how this should move forward, how Courtney should be involved, how Ken and his group should be involved, all that stuff. Let's, if you don't mind, because I'd like to get it out there so that everybody knows how it's moving forward.
Well, the number one objective or effort would be to quantify, if you can, certain criteria that would put a particular area in, in the adaptation area. So by that, you would look at what those criteria are.
Can we stop the conversation back there, please?
Sorry, I didn't hear it. Excuse me, please. Conversation in the audience makes it hard for the council to hear. Thank you very much.
So with Courtney's leadership, we would probably do our best, maybe from the staff's standpoint, and then present to the advisory boards what I would call measurable indicators of what you would see if it would be in a vulnerable area that would be included in the adaptation area. How would you better define? For example, you saw words that said "storm surge" and whatever. What does that mean? Does that mean you've had storm surge 12 times? How would you quantify certain things that would put you in a vulnerable area? And that's how you would try to do it.
And notice requirements and all that.
You would have.
Okay. I'd like a motion more basic than that. What timeframe are we looking at for the staff to get working on this, for the boards to do it, and for the council ultimately to try to make a decision?
Within six months.
For final resolution?
No, I think it would be...
Or for council, what?
For presentation to the boards for approval.
Yeah, within six months.
Okay. So then I'll move that we direct staff to do the work that's necessary to present the proper information to the advisory boards within the next six months.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott. Do I have a second? I have a second by Vice Mayor Briermer. Further discussion from council? Here are none. Laurie, please poll the council.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. At this time, we've been at this for a number of hours. Courtney, I know you said you had something to presentation, and after that, we'll take a recess. So Courtney, floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize some people. In the past, since I've been appointed, our staff has had to undergo some numerous changes. It's hard to have a new city manager. It's probably the hardest for two departments, because they work the closest with me and have to make a lot of changes. They've had to endure long hours. And there's two people that I wanted to recognize for that, for their hard work and their performance. And the first one is Lenore Alexa.
Show me the money.
Smile, Lenore. That's the whole purpose.
Nobody's taking the minutes.
And I know a lot of you see her working here, but a lot of you don't see what she does in City Hall and for everyone, every day. It's interesting, because today, when we, the mayor and I were at the event at EDC, we met a property owner, and the woman I talked to was just so wonderful. And I believe she, you know, she was just real respectful and very helpful. And of course, immediately, both the mayor and I said, that's Lenore. So this is for my thanks, for everything you've done for us and for me as a new city manager. And to let you know, you know, if there's three words to describe Lenore, it's definitely one of the greatest work ethics I've ever seen in my life, in addition to being trustworthy, very talented, and very honest in everything she does. Thank you. The next person. The next person is... If you want to think, dedicate, I like to surprise people. If you want to talk about dedication, there's no one you could possibly think of more than Christine. When we had to make Christine, it was interesting, because she was what we consider not salary. She was actually a employee that was available, had the ability to obtain overtime. And I thought, there's no way the city can afford to pay you overtime, because you're going to be working long hours. And she said, no, I appreciate, you know, I would like to be salary, because it takes the stress off me to be able to stay longer and not have to fit everything I have to do in 40 hours a week. And I thought, you know, not many employees say that. Not many employees would say, you know what? Don't give me overtime for all the hours I work. And, you know, Christine stays late. She's here on Saturdays when we're putting together budgets. But there was one time she was late in the morning. She got here at 10 o'clock, and I thought, where's Christine? You know, she's here all the time. And she was late because she was here until 4 o'clock in the morning before. So that gives you an idea of how hard she's worked. She's basically a one man, she was a one-man show pretty much for a while, and basically got it all done, not only with, you know, with excitement and gusto, but with perfection and excellence as well. So I appreciate everything you've done.
Awesome. Thank you so much. It helps to have a great group of people to work with.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney, and congratulations to our employees. At this time, we will take a 10 to 15 minute break.
Hi there. How are you? I know, good to see you. You know, I need your number, because I want to...
Are you ready? Let's do it. I'd like to reconvene in the city council meeting August 7, 2013. We are on agenda, item number eight. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You'll see that on the agenda is the request to purchase three police cars. The city of Satellite Beach, for years and years, was slowly moving towards Lionel Cody, who was the police chief prior to me, and it was an attempt to, for lack of a better term, in a one small way, was a keep up of the Joneses, because we were realizing that the recruitment and retention issues we were having, that was just a significant part of it. It's just a new generation, it's a new time, and that was much more significant than we realized back in the day, when we first started to attempt to go for an assigned vehicle policy. So we started to get there, and we got really close. And then the economy happened, and some other things happened recently, and we weren't able to get there. Well, you would think would be pay or, you know, or other issues, and really, it wasn't. And one of the main issues was the take-home. There were other things, I'm not saying that was it. So, policy. Talked to the incoming city manager, and I explained the process, and I didn't get it out, you know, a couple sentences, and she was fully aware of not only the program but the benefits, and was telling me things about it, like, "Hey, hello." And we just, we're in a position now where I'd like to try to get to that, and we are only three cars away from having the assigned vehicle policy back in Satellite Beach. And you can see in the memo, the history thing. I just wanted to give you a brief idea of the history. There's the research that was done, and the selection, and the reasons why. And if you have any questions, I could certainly answer this for you now.
Thank you. Counsel?
Your presentation material was really good.
Thank you.
I just have one thing. Next time, tell us what all that et cetera is. Et cetera is going to cost 18 grand.
Yeah, there's a lot of et cetera. Wires and, I mean...
Well, spare no expense.
It's actually, that wouldn't change. That's the one, that's the one thing that wouldn't change. Any car that you buy, it has to have those things.
Yeah, I'd like to know what they are.
I can list them for you right now.
Go ahead.
System, and the radar, and the police radio. Right there, the video system is $5,000, the police radio is $5,000, and the radio, or the radar, is about $3. That's $13,000 of the $18,000 right there. The rest of the et cetera are lights, flashlight, fire extinguisher, chargers, the wiring harnesses, the mount for the laptop, all the additional lettering for the, it says Satellite Beach Police, and all that on the side. And really, I, that's pretty much the et cetera, really.
Prisoner compartment?
I'm sorry?
In prisoner compartment?
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Further counsel comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. And I know you've kind of, kind of explained why the take-home, the pros and cons, so, and I understand it, but, and this is more a question directed at Courtney. The money, where is it coming from?
This is going to, we're proposing for it to come out of the capital assets fund balance. So, and I know the police chief's very interested in this from a recruitment...
I'm sorry, can't hear.
I know the police chief is very interested in this from a recruitment standpoint, but myself and the public works director is very interested in this from a maintenance and fleet recycle standpoint. So the, either we buy them upfront and replace them less often, or we have more than enough funds to cover this cost, and this would put us on a typical rotation back for the patrol vehicles, and put us back on a fleet replacement cycle.
So I, and I want to, just another question. I know last year we got the new charter, and then there was money budgeted in this year's budget for another vehicle, and we purchased that, and then we had a breakdown of the vehicle, so we purchased that, and now we're purchasing three more vehicles? How many new vehicles have we gotten in the past two years? Including these three, if we purchase them?
Well, one new one and a replacement. The one, the emergency one was a CID vehicle from Law Enforcement Trust, and that was just a replacement for a detective vehicle.
Okay.
So, I know when you say new, I don't, that car was purchased, but it replaced another car, it wasn't, in addition to the fleet.
Okay.
And the same thing was the new car the year before that was a replacement, because there's just, there's so many of them that are such high mileage and such a maintenance problem that, because we, when the economy went bad and things changed, we just didn't follow the replacement. You know, the, my capital improvement plan, which I know has been a sore spot, but I've had one, but when you come over and say, "Hey, you know, my capital improvement plan says I need to replace two cars this year," and they say, "Well, there's no money, so thank you very much, goodbye." So we didn't replace cars, and we just kept using them, kept using them, because you still have to work. And then Alan Potter comes over and jumps up on my desk, because the cars are costing fortune to, and they're always down, and every time they're down, then that means another car gets hot-seated, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I understand, but, and I'm going to sit and talk with Courtney about this tomorrow. When I hear that we can't replace the scoreboards at the ballfields, and we're dropping a nice chunk of change on three new vehicles, I sent you an email earlier where, you know, the ballfields, the hedgecock scoreboard has been out, and we're told there's no money to replace that. I sent it to you yesterday.
But that email, that email was from the...
We have other core services that we need to pay attention to, including our recreation facility, so I'm going to sit and talk to you about that tomorrow. It's nothing to do with this, but I see it's, and I'm going to put this out there. I feel like we're on a runaway trade of spending, 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 spending. We had an audit that didn't come back, and this is not, has nothing to do with the program. I completely buy into the take-home vehicle program. But we had an audit that came back and said increased revenue, decreased spending, and limit borrowing, and I just feel like, in the past five months, we spent a heck of a lot of money. And I'm very concerned about that, because we only had, the audit showed we only had $84,000 in reserves. So this is something I would like to sit down and talk to you about.
I'd like to address it now.
Okay.
Because that is basically saying that everything we've brought forward is just a, you know, a wish list, and basically, everything we've brought forward to you to budget this year was an emergency. And, you know, it's unfortunate that it is an emergency, but everything that we've brought forward was a must-have. Everything. So all of the equipment and things like that that have come before you has been a must-have.
Because money hadn't been spent on them earlier when it was first needed.
The recware, I mean, the recreation software died. The fleet vehicle that we replaced with the police department, the vehicle died. I mean, it was no longer working.
No, I understand that.
I just got notified today that our building, one of our building and zoning vehicles is no longer working. So everything that we have brought forward this, in this budget year, that while I have been here, has been to deal with emergencies that came up right in front of me.
And I'm not going to debate it, but we also are spending quite a bit of money on consultants for, you know, wage studies, which hasn't even been presented to us yet, and we gave 3% raises and are recouping the costs for, but I think this council needs to think about their spending.
We're, let me bring this back. We need to stick to this agenda item, which is the automobiles.
And it's also a big expenditure.
I understand that, but let's stick to the expenditure and talk about the automobiles. Any further comment, counsel?
Nope.
No, I know I've talked to, we've got some public comment coming on this, on these particular vehicles, so I think that we need to hear that, whenever you're ready, Mr. Merrick, because there is some issues about these particular cars.
The one thing I'm, thank you for the research. Because we're not backed into such an emergency as we were, the other one, it gives us the ability to do what we're doing now. What it was the normal cycle catching up to was from what we had done in years past. So I know, just the ballpark, is it one vehicle every year? Is the base, it's going to be the replacement?
Sometimes it's, you know...
It's two, it's...
Two and one.
Right. It's two police cars, one year, the next year it's a police car and admin. So that, what that does is it puts the admin cars on roughly a 12-year cycle, and it puts the 12- to 14-year cycle, and it puts the police cars on about a seven-year cycle. And that's pretty industry standard, as they say, and maintenance-wise, public works-wise, and of course, he has all that research which went into this. That's really about the proper timeframe for the amount of miles we put on the cars, the amount of use they get. Once they get to about that seven-year period, then they're really not maintenance-ready for patrol work around to do an inspection, or go do a code check, or go into the trash shop, you know, they're fine for that, but there would be maintenance nightmares for patrol cars. And that's been, that's been the history, but then we stopped, and like the city manager's mentioned, you can only kick the can so many, you know, down the road so many times, sometimes you've got to pick it up.
It's all catching up to us right now. So, you know, I'm sorry if people think that, you know, every meeting we have, we're requesting more expenditures, but there's no, in the budgets, we're taken down to such a level, we don't really have any flexibility, we have to bring it back to you, to ask for the funds, because we don't, you know, we don't have that built into the budgets at all.
Yes, but this is not coming from the general fund, this is coming from the capital assets fund, which is a fund that has to be spent on capital assets. And so that's where we're taking the money from, and there's definitely sufficient funds in the, in that capital assets fund.
Courtney, do you know how much is in the fund? I'm just curious.
We've spent currently about $35,000 in that so far. But I did want to, you know, talk about the scoreboards. The email that you sent me was from January, and we've already budgeted some scoreboards into the capital improvement program, so, you know, we'll have to get back on it.
For which year? I didn't remember this one.
Budget year.
Okay.
It's in the capital improvement program.
At this time, if I hear no further comment from counsel, I'd like to open up the public comment on this agenda item.
Well, Steve had mentioned this stuff to me just a few minutes ago, so this might be a couple things.
Steve, I'm sorry, but...
I was clearing my throat.
Great, okay.
I put out my little timer now. Steve Hedley, I'm still a resident, I haven't moved in the last hour. I have no doubt, concern, whatever you want to say, about the need of the vehicle, okay? The problem is twofold. One is going with the EcoBoost, the 3.5-liter V6 EcoBoost engine. That is the same engine that has been in Ford stable since 2009, and there are lawsuits, the National Highway Traffic Safety Board is looking into this thing. The Brevard County sheriff that I talked to said it has an issue where, once in a while, it will, and I, and I'm sorry, it'll slow down like pig in a slot, sorry. I didn't, I couldn't think of another time.
An analogy is an analogy.
Okay, just don't, it's not an analogy to you. Apparently, it has something to do with the amount of water, in other words, the rain, and the amount of humidity in the area, which is described Satellite Beach to a T, where when you press down on the pedal, the water damages, slows down, whatever you want to say, the air going through the intercooler, which goes to the turbo, which takes the V6 up in power, which gives you the acceleration that you need. They're talking about a fix within three to six months for this. And my point is, if we can hold off for that time, it might be better to ensure that we're getting cars, because I don't want some police catch somebody, stamping down on the accelerator and not going anywhere. I don't want them traveling down I-95, and the car suddenly slowing down to 30 miles an hour, and that has happened. I just think that, it's nothing against the purchase of the vehicles, right, you know, the need for them, I'm not speaking against that, but I'm concerned that this particular vehicle and this particular engine may have some concerns for us down the road, and I'm not thrilled with that. And a friend just pointed out to me that the V6 standard, it actually gets better in gas mileage than the EcoBoost. How that deals with, and it's in the documentation that you provide, how that deals with acceleration, and whether you need the acceleration or whatever, I would think that you would, you know, and that's fine, because it's going to sit there and idle it on a V6, no matter whether it's stamped or not. But my main concern is the 3.5-liter EcoBoost engine, it's got issues. If we can postpone, it might be worth it to make sure that we're...
Gabe Fine, citizens in Satellite Beach. It's been quite a while since I've been with the COP program, but I used to drive a COP car. To get to the main point is, once, when the COP car broke down, if there was a police vehicle available, and we need to take it out, check on some things, or take it, take the radio for repair, we'd take one of those police cars, and I must say they were in really, really sorry shape. I'm not, the COP cars is, as far as I'm concerned, a disgrace, but the police cars are really, are the ones that I thought were inadequate for a high-speed chase, inadequate to getting, not even a high-speed chase, getting from, get into a car real quick if there was a shooting or anything else. I have dealt in my business with every police department, from MIMS down to Fort Peters, Hutchinson Island, et cetera, including the sheriff's department. And I can tell you, without reservation, we have the best police department in Brevard County. I have dealt with sheriff's departments, with break-ins, robberies. We have the best police department in Brevard County, and as far as I'm concerned, that includes the police, the sheriff's department. Now, my point is this, we need to provide our police department, who are there to protect us, with the best possible equipment that keeps them safe. Would you rather skimp on this car, or would you rather wind up paying for a long-term workers' comp claim? Take your pick. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this agenda item? Here are none, back to counsel. Chief, one question here, under your recommendation, it said the Ford car vehicle was specifically built for police work. Is there a difference between the EcoBoost engine and a police car? Is there anything they do to it different than a standard plastic car that you know of? Or through your, let me add one other thing to it. Through your research, because you guys did a great job here, you compared it to what other police departments were using. Did you hear this from any police departments and...
Yes, we heard that. I can probably address all the concerns brought up here rather quickly. The reason we went the EcoBoost is threefold. A, it lowers, it lessens the carbon footprint, it's eco-friendly, and it gets 35% better gas mileage when it's idling. The average idle time is about six to six and a half, maybe seven hours every 10-hour shift in police work. The third reason is because in the 2013 problems, the cars that we're buying, we're going to be waiting three to six months already. That's already built in. The approval is going to happen tonight, so that we have the ability to put in the order, so that when the cars start to get built for the 2014, which is different than the, the issues that we're talking about are cars that are already have been built and been out there. The fixes and the works that would be potential, so the cars we're getting are going to be the next year. So they're not even going to be here for six months. The reason that we need to get it now is because, as we all know how government works, people ask for cars, budget get approved in October, so what happens? October 1, every car manufacturer gets a flood of orders, and if you're, if you're down on the list, then they make them as they come in. So we want to make sure that we get this done and get the order in there, so that we don't have to wait, so we can get the very first cars off the lot. So this is going to be a three to six months wait anyway, and it's going to be the next year, as opposed to the cars that might have been referred to now that have been being built. This is a newer car. So for those three reasons, along with the idle and the eco-friendly, on top of the, all the other issues that is in the report, it just seemed to make perfect sense. And the icing on the cake, if you will, is exactly what you said. This, of all the cars we looked at, this car was built. Crown Victoria's were the... This, of all the cars we looked at, this car was built, Crown Victoria was the absolute police, the best police car that was made for 15 years. They, they, that's what everybody drove. Well, Ford just took a little while to switch over, and in the meantime, we had to have something. And, well, you saw it in the document, I don't have to go over all that, but this car was built from the factory, from the beginning, to be a police car. And with the research we've done, the people we've talked to, the head of fleet maintenance for Brevard County Sheriff's Office, California Highway Control is buying hundreds of these exact same cars, because while the price is a little bit higher, the gas mileage is not quite as good as the charger, you make it up tenfold in the gas that you save in idling and the maintenance issues, because it's built to be used as a police car, which is exactly what it's going to be, not retrofit. So all those concerns have been taken into consideration and will be addressed, just like you all mentioned. Thank you. Further council comments?
That takes care of my questions.
Make a motion?
Please.
Move that we approve the purchase of three 2014 EcoBoost Ford interceptor patrol vehicles with equipment for a total maximum cost of $135,000 to come from the capital assets fund.
I have a motion by councilwoman Gott, second by vice mayor Breimer.
Can I make a question?
Sir, I'm sorry, public comment, I gave time for that.
Yeah, but something the chief said doesn't make sense.
I'm sorry.
And maybe y'all didn't catch it, so I want to bring it out.
I'm sorry, public comment is closed.
Are you going to vote for it?
Yes, we are. Public comment's closed. I'm sorry, I gave ample time for that public comment. And you can, weren't happy to talk to chief or one of us afterwards, the cars aren't going to be purchased for a few more months. Any further comment from council? I have a motion on the floor. Hearing none, Lenore?
Yes.
Vice mayor, yes.
Yes.
Mayor, yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Page five, nothing. Moving on to agenda item number 10, and I'm going to reopen this as a public hearing for resolution number 935, and I will read, "A Resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, imposing an annual stormwater utility assessment for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2013, against all real property within the city limits of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, providing for classification of property, providing for certification of annual stormwater utility assessment role, providing an effective date." That's ordinance number 935.
Resolution.
Excuse me, sorry, resolution 935.
Thank you, mayor. Section 52-6 of the city code basically states that on or before the 15th day of September of each year, the city shall cause, to be prepared, an annual stormwater utility assessment role based on information provided by the Brevard County Property Appraiser, and that such role should contain a summary description of each parcel of real property within the designated stormwater management system, benefit area, the name and address of the owner of such parcel, and the rate classification applicable to each parcel. The city has provided that in your packet. Resolution number 935 was advertised in Florida Today Legal Ads on July 18th and August 1st, which is another requirement of the ordinance to, the city is not proposing an increase in the rates, it would be, remain at $65 for an equivalent residential unit for single family.
Thank you very much. Council comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution.
That's what I asked.
With corrections that have come, but go ahead.
On the first whereas, city code of ordinances of the city, I need to insert of Satellite Second two at the bottom, the very end of that second line, same thing, code of ordinances of the city of Satellite Beach. The exhibit A, I found confusing the way it was presented here, the rates that are on page three, those are also part of the exhibit A, and they will be exhibit A. But going to exhibit A, if you look at M under building classifications, it says, "Any property designated as a trailer park." We don't have any trailer parks, so I'd like for us to strike designated as a trailer park and the word or, so that it would read, "Any property upon which is located any building or structure," et cetera.
I'll make a motion with changes as outlined by councilwoman Gott to adopt resolution number, oops.
935.
Thank you. Adopt it.
Any discussion from council? Open this up for public hearing. Hearing no public comment, bring it back to council. No further comment, Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Agenda item passes five, nothing. Moving on to, yeah, that's right, excuse me, I'm sorry. What was your number five? Number, item, agenda item number 11, take action on resolution number 936, which I'll read, "A Resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing the general fund stabilization reserve policy for the City of Satellite Beach, providing severability, providing a repealer, and provided for an effective date." That's ordinance number 936.
Move to adopt resolution 936.
Second. I have a motion by councilwoman Gott, second by vice mayor Breimer. Discussion from council.
I just have one question, and number five, when it says, expenditure should not be otherwise funded with operating revenues, I mean, isn't payroll like an operating revenue? Could we clarify that it would be in case of emergency? In the second line in five.
That's what it, it says, "The general fund stabilization reserve will only be used to fund expenditures for critical services, such as payroll, debt payments, and infrastructure needs in response to a natural disaster and/or major storm event." That's the first sentence.
But I mean, it goes not further to say, this fund shouldn't be, this fund should be used to, for operating revenues. Isn't payroll an operating revenue?
Yep. In this case, we're talking about when you're used to fund new programs or to fund expenditures that should otherwise be funded with operating revenues. Payroll is a necessary part of responding to emergencies, so we have to include that as, you know, our ability to pay for people who are cleaning up and doing the work.
Any further comment from council, or open up for public? Hearing none, this is, agenda items open for public. Ron Drigundis, resident, Satellite Beach. I know the source of the fund is not relevant here at this point. I tend to get it is, but I will leave it alone for the moment. Shouldn't there be a section in there for, for instance, what has been done with successful cities in New Jersey that have been able to rebuild within the nine, 10-month period since Hurricane Sandy, to have reserves tacked on to put towards FEMA? To ensure that there could be matching funds available, the 75-25 rule. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You guys still residing? Maybe not after tonight, I guess. I know, I know this is Andy's project, but under the fund balance projection page, there is estimated fiscal year 2012, 2013, 1213, whatever you want to call it, the stabilization reserve of $284,875. Am I reading right? Where's that coming from?
It's a budgeted additions to reserves. Oh, for this fiscal year?
2012, 2013.
It'll be the amount projected for reserves at year end.
Okay. So the amount projected for the reserves at year end, then that violates. Number eight on the reserve policy says, "The reserve will be funded by committing 80% of the additions to the reserves." The additions that you're adding at the end of the fiscal year. What you, he's, what we've done is we're taking 80% of the current reserves and then adding more. That's not allowed by the very policy that you're passing here. It's only the additions that you can add into there. Now, you can change it, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that you can't, but the policy itself does not allow you to start with the baseline of reserves already and dump them in there. It has to be the additions. That's the way it's worded.
Yeah, I'll have a clarification. Andy, we want to address that, or?
Right. Go ahead, you can, you can sit there.
The, to respond to the, the fund balance projection that you have, is a projection, so it's not the actual, so what the policy, how it reads is, at year end, the additions that are put into reserves, 80% of those additions to reserves will become part of that stabilization reserve, and the other 20% will become, for now, will become an assigned fund balance, but it'll be basically an unrestricted and not in the committed category like you're doing for your stabilization reserve. So the projections, are they're just simply that? I mean, they're projections, that year end, if we have $200,000 left over, that 80% of that would go into the stabilization reserve. That's the way.
And there's, there's no other option but to put addition to it? There's no current reserves.
Fund balances, at the year end, there's a fund balance, and then there's, every year, the fund balance either decreases or increases, so that amount will, 80% of that will go into the stabilization reserve, or it will go into the assigned or unassigned fund balance.
And this, this was part of the management?
Any further comment? Any further public comments? Hearing none, back to council. Council?
I think we got a motion, Ellen.
Did? We have, I'm sorry. Okay. Any further comment from council?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Lenore, you poll the council?
Yes.
Vice mayor, yes.
And to agenda item number 12, discuss take action on the budget, amend for replacement of air-conditioned unit located at the public works facility.
I just want to make it clear that there is no air conditioning working, so it's an emergency, there's no other choice but to do this, so I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from council.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the 59, .46.04 for replacement of AC in public works office.
Second. Motion by county, vice mayor Breimer, second by councilwoman Gott. At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item. Hearing none, bring it back to council. Any further council?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries four, nothing. Agenda item number 13, items for the next regular meeting.
At your next meeting, we will be presenting two ordinances, we'll be talking about special
events, we'll be presenting the fertilization ordinance to you, as well as a, the illicit discharge ordinance to you. We also will be presenting a quarterly budget report review for you, which will include a new report format, hopefully you'll like it, and a presentation on the, where we are on the budget.
Thank you. Any other agenda items that council?
I have, I have to stay on the wait. National Action Day of Action, I think it probably means it can't wait, if it's going to be a day of action. It can wait, day of action.
Get it corrected. Thank you.
You know, I do have a comment. I think there should be something regarding 9/11.
Yeah.
Proclamation, or don't they usually, municipalities usually declare Patriot Day or something?
I can let you hear it, yeah.
Thank you. Any other items that council needs to have on the agenda, please make sure you get with Courtney, and in enough time so she can be prepared for it. Moving on to agenda item 14, appointments to boards.
Move that we reappoint Richard Edgerton to the CPAB board.
Second.
Motion by councilwoman Gott, second by vice mayor Breimer. Any further council comments?
I'd just like, Lenore, thank you for putting it in this format, very easy to follow, works out great.
Thank you. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Lieutenant Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor, yes.
Yes. Motion passes four, nothing. Moving on to the adoption of minutes, and before we go any farther, this time, I'd like to read into the minutes that councilman Dominic Montanaro filled out Form 8B for a voting conflict on date 6/19 of 13, and also on 7/3 of 13, concerning the drop fund in which his wife participated. It is in the minutes and ready.
Move to adopt the minutes of the June 19 regular meeting, July 3 regular meeting, and July 17 regular meeting, as submitted.
Second. Motion by councilwoman Gott, second by vice mayor Breimer. Any further discussion from council?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, yes. Motion passes. We're back tomorrow night, 7 o'clock for.
Can we just discuss one thing before we go? I've actually filled out this form before, and other councilmembers have done it, but it's never been read into the record. Is, is that an issue that we need to deal with from last year?
I was told by the city clerk that I needed to read it into record.
No, I mean, what, what about, it was never done in the past for other forms that were done?
I can, I can look into the retroactive, but.
Okay.
I know, Lenore just been training, so she's, she found that, this is something that we.
You can go back to the council, which is.
Yeah, we can look into it and make sure that, if we can do it retroactively, we'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, I think there were actually three filled out last year, and they were not read into the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further business before council? Hearing none, tomorrow night, meetings adjourned.